Go ahead and call this meeting to a close. My name is Derek Day and I am the Chair of Thurston County Planning Commission. I reside in District One and the Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. And with that, we will go ahead and introduce ourselves, starting here in the boardroom with Commissioner Casino.
My name's Eric Casino. I live in the Lacey UGA and I serve at large.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Joel Hanson, serving District Three.
Grant Nelson, District Four.
Daniel Bonbacher, District One.
All right, and online, do we have any commissioners on the line tonight?
Was Sandy Fisher Kaiser going to join us?
Just join. Okay, perfect. So Commissioner Kaiser, we're just doing our introductions, so you can go ahead and introduce yourself.
Great, Sandy Kaiser, District Three.
Awesome, thank you. All right, and I don't think Bill is on yet, and I know Commissioner Pesenger will not move this tonight. Right, and with that, folks have had a chance to take a look at the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
I'd move to approve this evening's agenda.
Right. Moving second, and any discussion on the agenda? All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and I as well, motion passes. All right, next, if folks have had a chance to look at the meeting minutes, we'll read one of those from our last meeting, December 4th.
I'd move to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record for our December 4th, 2024 meeting.
Second. All right, moving second, and any discussion on the agenda from, or the minutes from last meeting?
Sorry about that.
Did you also?
Called them the agenda, maybe I called them the meeting minutes.
Okay, just to be sure, we are talking about our meeting minutes. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion passes as well. And welcome Commissioner Fishburne, I see you've joined us. If you'd like to give yourself a brief introduction.
Good afternoon, Bill Fishburne, Commissioner for District Four.
Thank you, Bill. All right, next on the agenda, we're going to move to public comments. So the Thurston County Planning Commission welcomes comments from the public at all of our meetings, and I'm going to go over our general speaking guidelines. Please introduce yourself, including the address where you reside in. Please address the Planning Commission, not the audience or staff. The Planning Commission may choose not to respond to public comments. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes. The timer will show on one of the video screens to help folks keep track of time. Meeting attendees cannot donate their speaking time to another person. No comments that are lewd and offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Also no comments that are commercial in nature. All materials provided to the county may be subject to release pursuant to the Public Records Act. Remarks on projects that have already had a Planning Commission hearing will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. So thank you for your cooperation. And we will go ahead and start here in the boardroom. We have a couple of folks who have signed up for public comment. And we will start with Elizabeth McNaggy. And then we'll go to Vanessa Lebel.
Good evening, my name's Elizabeth McNagney, I live at 1215, like, Lane Southeast, in Thurston County. I want to talk about the draft planning policies and loop you in on what's going on in those, even though it's not something you will have a direct decision on. The policies are for hearing before the Board of County Commissioners on January 14th at 3:30. The final policies will have a big impact on bar holdings, which is why I wanted to update you. As you recall, unlike the 2022 UGA Swap Law, the 2024 UGA Swap Law says that a swap cannot happen if it would result in an increase in development capacity. The county's hydrology report has found that bar holding swap would result in an increase in development capacity. Developers submitted draft policy language that says they don't have to comply with the 2024 Swap Law if the bar holding swap is to occur during the Comprehensive Plan update. The draft policy language that will be before the county commissioners on January 14th incorporates the identical language that the developers created. This language is legally flawed. The statute that talks about changes to comprehensive plans uses the phrase "annual review", and we discovered the Department of Commerce and local jurisdictions believe this means the same thing as amendment. I just wanted to give you a quick primer on these terms. Changes to the Comprehensive Plan can be big changes or little changes. Big changes are analogous to capacity of a budget. Those are the updates that happen every 10 years. Little changes are analogous to a budget amendment or an interim budget. Those are the amendments that happen annually, other than during the update years. To recap, the two general types of Comprehensive Plan changes are updates, which are big changes, once every 10 years, and amendments, which are the little interim changes that happen in the in-between the years. The term "annual review" is an umbrella term that means any type of change during any year, whether that changes an amendment or an update. The final bill report of the 2024 Swap Law, which was written by legislative staff, summarizes the 2024 Swap Law this way, and I quote, "A fully planning county may, as part of its annual review of proposed amendments, updates, or revisions of its Comprehensive Plan, review the patterns of development within each UGA," unquote. So the legislative staff summary of the 2024 Swap Law says the law applies not only to amendments, but also to updates. In other words, to all swaps, all years. Okay, so that's about issue. I want to alert you to a second issue.
We're over time, but thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
No, sorry.
Do you have your comments in writing, though? If we could share those with the Planning Commission, we could email them later.
Yeah, we'd be happy to see those. Thanks for understanding.
Hi, everyone. My name is Vanessa Lebel and I live at 6741 Alpine Drive Southwest Olympia in unincorporated rural Thurston County. And I want to briefly comment on two things. I also oppose the bar holding swap. I think we need to hold the line against developers, and our county has already defined the UGA, which is based on, you know, available water, which is something I'm incredibly concerned about, especially after having read the League of Women Voters Report on water in our area. We're actually not on an aquifer, we depend on groundwater, which needs to be recharged by rain. And if we pave over everything, that is not going to happen. I do support the creation of habitat connectivity projects in our community. I think that the work done by Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and Conservation Northwest is important. And not only does it improve, you know, connectivity for animals, but it also makes roads in communities safer for people because wildlife will have somewhere else to go instead of the roads in front of cars or in our yards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up is Rhonda Larson Kramer. I thought you were going for candy.
Awesome balance.
Inbounds.
My name is Rhonda Larson Kramer. I live at 1814 East Side Street Southeast in Olympia. Since tonight you'll be getting into the topic of wildlife corridors and habitat connectivity, I'd like to talk about that as it relates to bar holdings. I've given you some handouts. The first is a view of bar holdings from an Eagle's Nest platform. This is facing northeast. If you could turn to the second page. This shows a wildlife corridor that crosses bar holdings. Bar holdings is a choke point. If it's developed, this wildlife corridor is going to go away permanently. You can turn to the third page. The third page shows you a zoomed out view of the corridor where it connects the Deschutes River. You can go to page four. This is more zoomed out. The corridor would connect the Olympics with the Cascades if it were not for I-5 being there. And if you could go to the last page, please. The last map shows the 653 acres of preserved lands in the corridor. All the red parcels are preserved lands. These should be capitalized on. If bar holdings is developed, that opportunity will be lost permanently. These lands are held in perpetuity by Capital Land Trust, only ecosystems, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, and then private entities that have conservation easements. Thank you.
Thank you for the tour. All right, and that's a thumbs up to our public comment from the boardroom here. Unless there's anybody else who would like to provide comment, we will move online. And looks like some of you know the drill. If you're online and you'd like to give public comment, please raise your hand, and then Tasha will promote you to a speaker, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kristi White and I live in the Delphi Valley. I am very excited and appreciative to see that the wildlife connectivity efforts are on your agenda for the Planning Commission. These efforts are just extraordinary. As Thurston County's, you know, rural character continues to be encroached upon, I think these habitat corridors are just critical to who we are as a county and hope that you will, you know, continue to work with this process and make recommendations for these corridors to the county commissioners. I think it's just a wonderful, wonderful option for us. And thank you for looking at it and hope that you'll bring it forward to the Commissioners with a positive recommendation. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm not seeing any other hands online. If that's not true, please feel free to raise your hand. All right. Well, I believe that brings our public comment to conclusion. And with that, we will move on to new business. And the next item on our agenda is with the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, talking about habitat connectivity.
Okay, if I just open with a "thank you" or let Amelia open with a "thank you", this is kind of a special time. We started this last December with the Planning Commission just reserving some space to see a bigger picture because the rest of your meetings, we just overlook the paper. But as a lot of the folks here can attest to, you've heard a lot about the importance of habitat quarter connectivity. We're trying to do our best to incorporate some innovative policy language into the plan, but this is really just a sort of a sit back, listen, and sort of recharge for the new year as we continue on with filing you up with lots of paper. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much for inviting DFW. I'm a last minute addition. Julia was urgently slated to present, she's sick this week, but I am very intimately attached to all of this too. So I appreciate you inviting us to talk about what we're working on over at DFW. I'm Stephanie DiMei. I'm also a Thurston County resident, came from a mile up the road here, and I'm a research scientist at DFW in our Habitat Program Science Division. So I want to start off with just defining habitat connectivity, so we're all on the same page. Habitat connectivity is the degree to which the landscape facilitates or impedes wildlife movement. Why do wildlife need to move? There's several reasons. They need to make daily movements to access resources like food, water, and shelter. Many wildlife species in Washington make seasonal migrations on an annual yearly cycle to go between winter and summer ranges or visit their breeding habitats. Wildlife often disperse from where they were born to go seek out new territories into adulthood and spread their genes around to improve the genetic health of populations so they don't get isolated and inbred.
Sort of fisher cat.
Yeah. He's dispersing. Get him go. And in our era of climate change, habitat types are shifting northward in latitude and upwards in elevation. And as that habitat shifts, wildlife need connected habitat to be able to track those changes and find suitable habitat as it's moving up from underneath them. Improving habitat connectivity is the number one most recommended strategy for improving the climate resilience for wildlife. So really, connectivity and climate resilience go hand in hand. And that's also really good news in the planning world that working to improve habitat connectivity is a really nice way to help meet the new climate resilience requirements in comprehensive plans. So all of these processes are really important for healthy wildlife populations and ecosystems. And without connectivity, these processes start to break down. Connectivity is threatened by processes like development that remove or degrade habitat or create barriers to movement. So if we look, I don't know where to point, but across this gradient of development, you can see as there's more and more development, there's less and less habitat. And if you want to use your imaginations with me, pick one of these bottom pictures here. Pretend you're an animal and see if you can make your way across from the bottom of the picture to the top of the picture. And you can see as there's more development, it gets a lot harder to make a path across. I also want to acknowledge here that habitat connectivity means something very different for different species. So if we look at the salamander trying to cross the road here, it's going to have very different needs than the deer walking through and pooping in my backyard. So when we talk about habitat connectivity, there's habitat connectivity overall, but it's going to be different if you're thinking about a salamander or a fisher or a deer. It's not a one size fits all situation. So we've established and appreciate all the public comments also saying that connectivity is really important, especially here in Washington, we really value our wildlife and wild spaces. So I'd like to introduce to you the Washington Habitat Connectivity Action Plan. We'll call it WACAP for short because it's easier to say. And this is a collaborative partnership. It's being led by us at DFW, but we're not doing it alone. And our goal is to prioritize places and projects to protect and enhance connectivity statewide. We have a handful of guiding principles as we work through this process. One is that we want to build from what we have. So if you don't know it already, Washington has really been a leader over the last decade or so in connectivity science and mapping. We're really good at it. Other states look to us and say, hey, let us learn your methods. That's really cool, you guys are doing a great job. And we have, we've done a really great job in connectivity science and mapping. We don't want to leave that behind and say, we have a new thing now. We want to build on all of that knowledge base and the partnerships that have been created and move us forward from there. We also want to support and amplify existing connectivity work where it's already happening in the state. We don't want to shift and say, okay, we have a new action plan and these are our priorities. Stop doing that. We want to point to those things and say, you're doing a great job. That's awesome. How can we get you more support and lift up the work that you're doing? We also want to focus on action, not analysis. This is a really big undertaking. We could get paralyzed for a decade trying to make it perfect, but we can't do that. The need is now. The state is rapidly developing. Climate change is here. Comprehensive plans are being updated. We have so much information that we just need to say, we're going to take action. We'll keep improving it over time, but the time to act is now. We're also focusing in the WACAP on both road crossings and landscape connectivity. So a lot of connectivity action plans across the country, they pick a lane, they say, we are looking at the highway system and we want to find locations for over crossings and under crossings. We want to get animals across roads. On the other hand, there's just the broader landscape where the shrub step in eastern Washington is being developed and turned into agriculture. We need to keep connected pathways through the shrub step. That doesn't have to do with highways. That's just landscape overall. We're interested in both. Both of them are super important for keeping a connected Washington. Our last guiding principle is that we're focusing on terrestrial connectivity. We fully acknowledge, I think all of us, if you're living in western Washington, we know salmon are a big deal. They're very important. Fish passage, aquatic connectivity, very important. There's a lot of people working on that, and that's not what we're doing here. We're focusing on the terrestrial connectivity in this plan, acknowledging that aquatic is super important, and we have a lot of people thinking about that. We also have two advisory groups in this process. We have a technical advisory group that is our really smart science brains, that they're the ones that over the last decade or so have been creating all of this amazing connectivity science in Washington. So we have them still on board, helping us think through all the really nitty gritty details about how to model things and very, very fine scale decisions that they're able to get in there with us and help us move forward. We also have an implementation advisory group that's made up of conservation practitioners, and they're helping us to create products that they can use. We don't want to spend all this time making something and then it gets into their hands and they say, I don't know what to do with this. We want them to tell us what they need so that then we can create what they need and we can create it together. And on our implementation advisory group, we have state agency staff from DFW and WashDOT. We have Conservation Northwest. We have land trusts. We have city and county planners. We just want everybody who could possibly be using this plan to be on board with us, helping us create something that they can use. The WACAP is slash is going to be composed of three main components and products that we're going to be sharing out. The first is maps showing where connectivity is. The second is a short list of priority locations for taking action. And then the third is strategies for implementation. So we show you where the important areas are. Now here's what we recommend that you do there. So we'll go a little bit into more detail on each of those three things. But we've pretty much finished up the mapping stage where, with the help from our technical advisory group, we've reviewed and synthesized existing connectivity maps for Washington and selectively updated the maps to reflect current conditions and fill data gaps. When we look at those maps, they are presented in terms of cores and corridors. And this here I'm showing is centered on Olympia. We're in Thurston County here. This is just a subset of the blobs on the map, so don't get too wedded to the placement of the blobs. But this slide is just to illustrate that we have cores and corridors. The cores in green are relatively large contiguous flocks of high quality habitats. So this is where we expect wildlife to be spending most of their time, and they can meet most of their needs in those areas. The corridors between them are areas that facilitate or are permeable to wildlife movement. So it may not be high enough quality that they're spending their entire lives there, but they can move through it on their way between cores. I also want to point out that these corridors can be narrow where there's pretty defined path that they have to take. Maybe there's development or agriculture on one side or the other, and that path is the path. There's no other way. On the other hand, there are areas where these corridors are, like, it doesn't, it's not even really a corridor. It's just a big pink blob over here. These are working forest lands. It's not like there's one single path that an elk must take from point A to point B. It's just broadly permeable. They can take a lot of different paths through it. This is our draft statewide connectivity map here. We still have cores in green and corridors in pink, but now we've added a layer where there's a gradient from dark to light that shows different habitat quality. And that gets to, connectivity means something different for different species. Some species are very sensitive to human activities. They're going to be found only in those higher quality darker areas. But then when you have the deer walking through our backyards, they're much more tolerant of humans. So we've kind of relaxed the threshold little by little here into these lighter colors, allowing cores and corridors to form into more human impacted areas, acknowledging that some species can use that just fine. So the next step after we've mapped connectivity statewide is to determine what our priority locations are. So we're working now on developing different metrics that we can use as criteria to raise some areas as higher priorities than others to try to get to a shortlist, maybe 10 to 20 of the highest priority locations in the state. So this is where we are right now. This is actively happening. This is what keeps me up at night right now. And everything in the next couple of slides has been generated in the last week or so, and it's all going to change 10 times before it's finalized, but.
They're familiar with that. Things that change.
Very in progress. I joke that every decision that we make on this only lasts for 20 minutes because then we try something else. Some of the metrics that we're looking at for determining what our spatial priorities are, are what species are there. These are a bunch of the species that have been modeled over the last decade or so. We have good connectivity models for these species. So let's pile them all up and see where in the state supports connectivity for more species versus fewer species. We also think riparian corridors are really important. Just like they're a corridor for water, they're also a terrestrial corridor, and they're also natural climate corridors. Water flows through gravity, which means that they connect lower elevation habitat to higher elevation habitat, which makes nice paths for species to move in response to climate change. Also conveniently, riparian areas have a lot of protections through the critical areas ordinances. So it's a way to just double up all the benefits that they're already receiving by being protected as riparian. They're also important for connectivity. So this is a map showing density of riparian areas across the state. Southwest Washington shocked me, but it is very wet in southwest Washington. We also have a handful of connectivity metrics that come out of the connectivity models that say that some areas are more important for this whole connected network versus others. We're still figuring out what to use and how to use it. We have data like that. We have a few climate connectivity metrics that we're looking at how to use. Basically, we're just taking all of these other sources of information and we're going to smush them together, and that is going to help us determine our statewide shortlist of priority locations. And here at a county, county planning commission meeting, and I want to acknowledge that for a lot of cities and counties, when they're looking at their comprehensive plans, their zoning, what they want to do, they might not come out on this shortlist of 10 to 20 locations statewide. But we don't want you all to think that just because you're not on that shortlist, that there's not important areas in your jurisdictions. So we'll also be making available all of this prioritization information so that anyone for any county or city or forest region can look at their area that they work in and figure out what their local priorities are. So the next step that we'll be moving on to in the new year is with a lot of help from our implementation advisory group, identifying statewide and regional strategies. Identifying statewide and regional strategies for improving connectivity. Statewide and for a small shortlist of priority locations. Taking more steps to start identifying partners, figuring out next steps to move us towards actual projects on the ground. So our WACAP is due this coming summer and I also wanted to acknowledge that the WACAP. Is for everybody doing connectivity conservation work in the state. It's for state agencies. It's for land trusts. It's for city and county planners. It's for federal land managers. But we also at DFW have our priority habitats and species program that creates. Data and management recommendations and technical assistance specific for land use planning audiences. And we will be using our WACAP data and recommendations and funneling that through our priority habitats and species. Program and the priority habitat that that falls under is called biodiversity areas and corridors. So we will be updating our biodiversity areas and corridors maps and we're also actively updating our biodiversity area and corridor. Management recommendations so that we'll have products that are specific for the land use planning audiences and not just. A broad statewide thing for everybody. So that is what I have to share. I have some contact information up here on the screen. Julia Mahalik is the project lead for this. My contact information is also here. I'm on the core team for this project. We have a website and a QR code. WACAP website and also a QR code if you would like to join our mailing list. And you can get emails from us and invitations to join webinars. And that's all I have to share. Thank you so much for, for inviting us to come talk about this. It's very exciting work.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Questions, if you're, if you're willing to take them.
Sure.
You should be careful.
I was hoping that maybe you could give us an example of. An action item that you would recommend to somebody in our position. Like what, what would we expect to see from. You folks through your implementation program?
Yeah, so for specifically for a land use planning comprehensive plan zoning, we're looking at. Urban growth areas. If there's an important wildlife corridor there, maybe let's. Designate that as an urban growth area.
Are you thinking that we should take wildlife or these wildlife corridors and calling them out? In similar ways that we would other critical areas or maybe something not to that level, but at least. Identifying them, mapping them and letting landowners know that they have them on their property?
There are a few different avenues and we're still having internal discussions of what we want. To advocate for, but critical areas is one possible avenue of. Designating it as a critical area and then there's a no net loss standard and that might be a little scary. There's also zoning overlays. There's a few examples, I think in Utah and Florida where they've created. We call it a wildlife corridor overlay zone and then designated things that can or can't happen. And there and that's a little bit less of a scary regulatory hook maybe than the critical areas known at law standard. So we had, we don't have a stance yet as an agency on that, but there are those kinds of tools out there.
Are you expecting that the corridors are going to be defined by that technical group or somewhere in the mapping there? Or is that something you are expecting that the local jurisdictions are going to have to figure out? I mean, like with shorelines, it's very easy for us to figure out where a shoreline is. It's not very easy for us to figure out where a corridor is.
Yeah, and this is like in our priority habitats and species, other priority habitats, you go out. If you're in the shrub step, you look around and you say, yep, I'm in the shrub step or yep, this is riparian. There's a stream right there, but you don't know you're in a corridor. Unless you go back to your computer and look on a map. So we have our statewide map. And that is kind of course, because when you're mapping something across the entire state. It has to be course. So we would encourage local jurisdictions to ground truth us and say. DFW says this is a corridor. Let's go and make sure there's not a Walmart there. Because maybe our remote sensing data was from a couple of years ago. So we want people to. Not just trust us blindly, like if it's smaller jurisdictions that don't have capacity. That's a good first step is to take our maps, but we would hope that you can check them out. See if it seems right and we'll also be available to help. We have, I see Marion. I don't know if she's still on there. Marion is one of our land use planning leads. We have land use planning folks at DFW that we would. Encourage folks to reach out to and say, hey, can you help us make sense of this and help fine tune what this means in our very specific location?
Commissioner Kaiser, I'm sorry, I didn't see her.
Thank you. Yes, that was a wonderful presentation. Thank you so much. And it was terrific to see the statewide. Planning and thinking that's going there. I'm curious, I'm on the board of the Capital Land Trust and we do. We are always very much about connectivity when we make choices about lands to buy. But we also are about that when we think about conservation easements and I was curious if. If property that is under conservation easement would be reflected in your maps.
Another good question. Our maps are based on. Remote sensing satellite imagery from space and it's based on. You know, are there trees there or are there not trees there? So if there's trees there. Our maps don't really discriminate between if it's national park or a conservation easement. It's just based on the condition. Of the land as it is right now. So easements, if they're in good condition. Very much want to support and celebrate and highlight that. And if they're not in good condition, whether it's an easement or any other type of land. We can highlight that as an area that could use some restoration if it's in an important linkage area.
Thank you.
A couple of questions. So there was no ground truthing by doing any type of survey for animals out in these corridors?
That is correct.
That's correct. So what they did is they had somebody sit behind a computer, geospatial maps to take a look at it from a. A ten thousand foot level, looking down and saying, okay, well, this is all green area and these are the rivers and streams. So we think this is where the wildlife would go. Even though we would know black tailed deer don't normally migrate more than five square miles. And that elk normally are either in the Olympics or they're in the Cascades. They don't really migrate between the two. I'm just curious. You know, this information is being put out, but it, like you said, it hasn't been ground truthed. And it, it does tend to follow the greenery, the green space, although there's other green space also in the area. I, I, I'm really struggling with the idea of. The information being put out and then we're making decisions. Based on that information that is not ground truth, that's only based on. A ten thousand foot look at the landscape. That, that bothers me a little bit because there's a lot of green space in there. What kind of animals terrestrial? You showed a bunch of them on the screen. Some of them aren't even in Western Washington, but a few of them aren't actually. So is there a specific set of animals for this area that you were looking at that migrate? Cause a lot of these animals don't migrate.
Do you want to add?
I mean, you're, you're the expert here, but I was just going to point out that we're using migration in two different ways here. One of them is migration in the sense of like seasonal movement for which you're very much correct. The other is migration in the sense of moving with changing environments and that's a lot of what. These, these are with dispersal events. And that's a lot of, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a lot of what you're talking about when you're talking about corridors? Is that what you're looking at when you're looking at this connectivity?
Yeah, like everybody getting in my presentation, we had these big long distance seasonal migrations. We also have daily movements. We have juveniles. Just going off to find their new territories in adulthood and we have. Like you're right that in Western Washington, we had fewer of those species that we had models for already. A lot of our species of interest and conservation concern over here are. Like your frogs and your salamanders and your toads and we just don't have good data on that because that's really hard to study. And so those, like the best that we can do at this point in time, unless you all write your legislators and say, give DFW lots of funding so we can go. Monitor all these things really closely. Yeah, we would love to do that.
What's your job? Salamanders.
How many graphs can you hit this year?
So we are like a part of our, yeah, we're focused on action, not analysis, that we could just. Circle and circle and say, oh, we need to validate this. We don't have enough information here. And that is true. We, we want all that data. We want to learn. We want to validate where we can, like our mule deer and. I think sage grouse. Definitely mule deer is based on more like ground truth empirical data.
Well, that's Eastern Washington.
Yeah, that's true.
Eastern Cascades and so decades of.
We want that. We're trying, but in terms of like, this is the best available science. Right now, we want to get that out because we can't wait until it's perfect.
And I will say that, I think that's also, you just touched on it very end and the standard for the information that we're using is really best available science. So over time and with the good graces of our legislators, we might be able to ground truth some of it. But it probably is important to, to take the information we have and try and protect what we do have.
Yeah, and if, if local jurisdictions have better data, use that. If you know where your animals are. Use that, like please use us as a starting point and add in everything that you have to and that'll be the best outcome.
And I was curious over time if there, if you do have other strategies for, for actually like. Ground truthing some of it. Cause I know some of that data would have to be so fine scale. Like I'm thinking about where I grew up and. The little lake that I grew up on, we basically never saw wildlife. And in the last five years, my aunt and uncle who still live there have been seeing elk. Moving through their yard consistently.
I think a lot of it's funding and study, but there's, like, there's two levels of information. There's one is just where are the animals? And that's easier to study. So you can go out and do a survey and find them, but it's harder to study where they're moving over time. That's. A different level of information. It's harder to get. GPS things, which you can put a GPS collar on an elk or a deer, but it gets trickier when you have frogs.
Yeah, yeah. Social media and AI might be a good solution, but Ashley and Colin and then we'll need to move on because I'm.
Because the best available one is still being developed is DFW and their toolkit considering. Just as many incentive based tools versus regulatory tools?
Yes, so part, part of our, that, that third point, a part component of strategies for implementation, we want to hear from. All of our implementation advisory group, what works you do. Let's put that in and let's get recommendations. So voluntary incentives, absolutely. We want to provide. Guidance and examples and.
I'm thinking things like voluntary stewardship program models and whatnot. And I know some of the repairing work with all the funding coming out. And it's sort of following along those lines. And I know at least at the local level has been received very well. So yeah, I would look forward to seeing those pieces of the toolkit because it is hard to regulate like.
Yeah.
Without a very defined corridor. Individual properties.
I just wanted to pop in, we did have a note pop up from our next speaker from Conservation Northwest, Brian Stewart. He said he also has some answers for some of these questions. So that could be great for his presentation.
Yeah, Brian's on our advisory groups.
Alright, we look forward to it, Brian.
I've got a couple of things. Number one, it seems like, and I think you said that you're largely looking at forested land. And I think in Thurston County, you're doing us a huge disservice. So much of our. Open land is grassland and it is one hundred percent connectivity for all sorts of animals.
Yes, agree.
So, you know, saying, oh, here's capital forest. That's all this greenery and here's the Skookumchuck Valley, but there's nothing in between. I mean, it completely misses the point.
We agree. We have, we have our funding from the legislature and we had. Two years to get all of this. We had contractor, Teradata, working on these ecosystem models. And we had the time and the funding for four ecosystems across the state. There's lowland. Peeta Sound forests. We have music, Montane forests, so like west side of the Cascades. Some of the Olympics, we have the dry forests on the east side and we have shrub step. And we could only pick four and we thought those cover a lot of the state. We're doing a statewide thing. We very much heard that we're missing South Sound Prairies. We are missing other things too undoubtedly.
Huge swaths of farmland all over the state. I mean, I noticed Whitman County was almost all white. I mean, you, I don't know how many people visit there, but I've spent a lot of time there. There's an unbelievable number of pheasant. There's deer. There's moose. I mean, there's all sorts of stuff there. And we're saying Whitman County has no connectivity? It's, I mean, it's what, it's what we get all the time is you look at. And you know, we say, oh, well, we only had this much. Well, but that's the problem. Is when you, and I know it's not your fault. It's your, it's a lot of it's your funding, but.
Yeah.
When you say, oh, we're going to look at this and you completely ignore huge sections of it. You know, my other issue is I saw the list and I saw state agencies. I saw conservation groups. I didn't see any landowner groups. Where's the, cause when you look at Thurston County, almost everything that you had lit up is either. Government owned or privately owned forest land. You know, and again, of course, you're missing all the other, the privately owned farmland and all that stuff and. You know, this is, I'll tell you, it's going to be a problem when this comes up is. How am I supposed to get on board with this when I can tell, I can look at the list of people you've invited and say. You didn't even look for me. You didn't ask me what I thought. And I mean, and that's what, I mean, that happens a lot and. I think it's something you guys need to look at is, because the other thing is who are you going to incent? You're supposed to be incentivizing. If you're going to incentivize these people and you're going to go, you know, I'm, I'm going to come at it like. A little, looking at you a little side eyed because you've gone through this whole process and now that you want incentive, now you're going to invite. The landowners to the table. So.
It can help connect you with landowners.
Thank you.
That has been.
I'd accidentally be volunteering for another.
Brian's, Brian's really good at that too. Like, yeah, it's, it's hard at the statewide scale. For sure, but when we get down to the point of doing projects in places, like absolutely, I hear you.
And knows that as a county, like we are happy to be a partner with that side. As a concerted effort we're making and planning is to try to. Reach more landowners and make sure that their voices are heard. And so if you're looking for one of those local jurisdictional partners. Turn to the county.
So thank you so much for coming. We really, really appreciate it. Are those maps and resources available online as well?
Not yet. Wait till June.
Can we sort them by species?
Probably eventually.
Okay, good. Alright. Thank you again. And next, we're going to move on to item number five with Conservation Northwest and a wildlife connectivity. Or wildlife connectivity and outseats.
Can y'all hear me alright?
Loud and clear, Brian. Thank you.
Cool. Before I get started, I'll do an introduction and I'll answer some of the questions that I heard that might. You know, make a little bit more sense for everybody. Brian Stewart, Cascades Olympics Program Manager for Conservation Northwest, Habitat Connectivity Researcher. Conservation biologist. I'm on the Washington Wildlife Habitat Connectivity Working Group, the, the Technical Advisory Committee for the WACAP. Implementation Committee for the WACAP and everything else with an acronym that has to do with connectivity, pretty much on this side of the Cascades. To answer some of the questions, some of this stuff was ground truth. So some of the maps they're using to include in their mapping effort at, at the state were already done. So. Luckily for us, Southwest Washington was actually done. Recently and so. And that map is available to everyone and you can look at that. It's all species related to us. It's all. You know, stuff we'd, we'd be used to and it's ground truth for the most part. It uses a lot of local data. And it's, it's totally Southwest Washington. It's not going to meet the priorities when the state stuff comes out, but it's something that I think everyone at the. At the county is going to be interested in because it's your species. It's your backyard and it's a little more fine tuned. It's got beaver. It's got black tailed. It's got. Fisher. It's got, you know, cougar stuff that we all know that, that is, that is here. Another couple of other things that were mentioned was. Yes, farmland and prairies and the local stuff was included. And it's also important to remember that just because something's not a core. Doesn't mean it's not a corridor. So if you have a grassland, it's included as a corridor because there's no resistance to it or little resistance. And so. That'll be in there as corridors. It may not show up as a core for a given species. But we were able to do prairies and other landscape habitat types in the local stuff that we have and that's at waconnected.org. And I, I can provide that when we're done. A, a mention about the elk only being in the Cascades and Olympics, it's, it's not necessarily true. We actually have lots of data. And I, I can provide that when we're done. Uh, a, a mention about the elk only being in the Cascades and Olympics, it's, it's not necessarily true. We actually have lots of data of elk right along I five. And I can show you a couple of pictures of that where they're trying to get across, but they can't because of I five. So that's sort of an issue. And I think that sort of addresses a lot of what I heard there. Um, you know, there's, so there's different levels, right? And so working with the Washington Wildlife Habitat Connectivity Group for the last five, six years, been on the ground doing a lot of the nitty gritty mapping that probably be more useful at this stage. And it's still best available science. It's just not the statewide priority. So something to think about as we go through this and we can talk about more, more at the end, um, but I'll get going here. Oh yeah. And I also mentioned my transitions are on point. So if you love them as much as I do, you're going to enjoy it. We already kind of did a one-on-one on what connectivity is. You know, I'm not going to get too much into that, but again, I think what's important to reiterate is that connect, connectivity is climate change adaptation. It is the evolutionary process of moving genetics across the landscape. And it's super important. Um, I believe it's 50% higher expecta- experta- eh, expertations and extinctions. When you have fragmented landscapes, that's a huge number of species that you can lose if they can't move to um, a more appropriate habitat, but Stephanie did a great job of covering them. So we'll get into Thurston County and why we're talking about I five and all that good stuff. So in 2019, I did my thesis, which was essentially looking at I five, ground truthing it, looking at whether there was opportunities for connectivity. And that and a follow-up report I did identified three linkages at the time, southern linkage, northern linkage and middle linkage. Those numbers, uh, sort of correlate to the ones on the map and you can kind of see, you know, where they are and you can kind of see the top one is, it should be a little higher. That map's a little off because, uh, my comms people weren't quite on point, but that is the northern linkage and that runs right through Thurston County. And it's super important for planning and processes, um, going forward as we seek something there. See that? I love that one. Uh, as I was saying, I was working for the Washington Habitat Connectivity Working Group. The Cascades of Coast Analysis is the one we would, you would all be interested in. It's being used in the WACAP data, but it, it also confirmed that those locations were correct. That there were three roughly three linkages that crossed I five, the last remaining ones. The middle's been sort of defunct is not defunct, but it's too complicated to maybe get viable crossing structures and corridors. So the state's not focused on them. Um, I'm still focused on them as a local person, right? The new WACAM is, is where that one is. But you see the little orange, uh, nub there. Um, that is the northern linkage. That's exactly where the feasibility study, which we'll talk about in a second, um, is looking to see where crossing structures can go, what the cost and, and what we need to do about it. On the right, you see the, am I right? You're right. I think it's all the right, uh, the actual working group product that we made. Um, and that's the kind of stuff I think could be more useful at this stage for you all. As you look at like, what does it matter to me? And what does it matter for species in my backyard? There is data out there. We can use it. We don't necessarily have to wait for the WACAP because they're also using this data. This data is being built into what they're doing. So I hold this little thing called the biennial, biannual connectivity summit started in 2022 and in 2024, we had another one at the Grand Mound facility, uh, uh, at, uh, at Grand Mound, the, uh, Great Wolf Lodge facility. It's pretty cool. And they had really great brownies, which I heard were amazing. That aside, this is where through these meetings, we found that WashDOT had an issue. We really need, uh, engineers, because we don't have capacity to look at where crossing structure goes. So we may know there's a corridor, but we don't have capacity to do any sort of feasibility study or ground truthing or scoping or anything. So we decided at that meeting, we Conservation Northwest being we, we're going to pay for a feasibility study to see what it's going to take to get crossing structures in I five. That feasibility study is done. It just got done about two weeks ago. Um, there's me down there in the corner, um, with some WashDOT folks and, and the contractors who were hired for this. And the feasibility study has been an eye opener. It's been super, um, dense sort of report, but all that being said, we're now in a better position to say, what is it going to take? Is it possible? What's viable? And for Thurston County, this is what we're looking at. Essentially, these are the potential over crossings where we might put crossing structures and where we actually looked on the first day. So, uh, if those of you are familiar in 92, five, roughly in that area, there's a Veterans Ecological Trades Collective Farm that is being cleaned up and will likely be given to, uh, the Shalas Tribe. We don't know for sure, but that's the plan. Um, and then in the south of that, there's one and north of that, it's one. But this whole area constitutes the northern linkage. Or linkage is, because it's more like tendrils. And you can see this goes right through the heart of some, some important rural Thurston County areas. And of course, it, it's, it's complex and we'll get more how complex it is. The feasibility study showed us some stuff, showed us wildlife sort of density where we're finding, where they've been identified. This doesn't include camera data, which we have. It also showed us climate connectivity and how important that is for the area. And so because it's more rural, because there's more trees, there's more canopy. Yeah, of course, this is going to be important for climate change. But as you can see, that's just using a naturalist. And there's a lot of species identification going on throughout the area, amphibians, you know, ungulates, et cetera. And of course along I five, I don't know why they're getting so close to I five to do a naturalist identification, but there you go. Some people are hardcore and super, super unsafe. The next piece, eh, this is sort of the number of species, and these are more related to the connectivity maps I was showing that were local. How many cross in that area? And you know, it's like, you can see five to four to three, down to two to one. But the tendrils that we're concerned about are the ones that are thicker and blue. And that's kind of where the cross, over crossings are looking at. The ones you see below at the milepost in the fifties, that's southern linkage. That is, uh, not really, uh, an issue here, but it's, it's one major priority for the statewide stuff and for WashDOT. Because the land ownership's still locked down on each side. And we'll talk about that in a minute. Um, on the other side, you'll see sort of parcels broken down and you'll see the Veterans Ecological Trades Collective in that kind of baby blue teal type of color. And that's going to be an important focus point because it's one of the landowners I started working with first. And we've, we've collected so much data there. You know, there's elk, there's black bear, there's cougar, there's bobcat. There is everything you could think of smudged up right along I five, just waiting for a way to get across. And so the idea that, you know, the species aren't there, they're, they're seriously there in big numbers. And they don't get onto I five because if they do, they get killed. So you don't have a lot of collisions like you see in other parts of the state because it's such a, um, high traffic, uh, road that species would be crazy to try to, to cross it. Here's some numbers that came out of that feasibility study. Um, just to give you an idea of cost, rough, rough costs. They're not cheap, uh, especially in an area like this. Um, and these include fencing and, and all this other stuff that goes along with it. And they're mostly over crossings instead of under crossings for two reasons. One, under crossings cost a lot more. Um, and two, a lot of species only use over crossings. So we kind of have to say, okay, over crossings are probably our best bet. But you can kind of see where those over crossings are planned to go. Um, and the land that would be needed to maintain those corridors, so they're not bridges to nowhere are all Thurston County. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. The development patterns in the northern linkage where we're at. So to give you an idea of what we've been doing at Conservation Northwest and what we think everyone needs to be worried about at the planning department is keeping those corridors viable as we go forward, looking for funding for the crossing structures. Without those corridors, we have nothing. The good news is slowly but surely we're starting to get landowners who are interested, you know, voluntary, uh, uh, folks who want to get easements, people who want to get their land bought by us, asking us to buy their land. Um, we've even bought some land that was for purchase. We'll talk about that in a second and gave it to the, gifted it to Shalas Tribe because it's right on the corridor and these circles kind of represent that, the green circle, the blue, the, the black and the red are all land that either locked down or will be locked down. For the, the northern linkage. And so any parcels outside of that, obviously are super important. Again, you just have species on the other side that shows the focal species maps and how important these areas are for the, the linkage and the crossing structures. That's a good one. Um, so here we are again, looking at those, uh, uh, parcels, but also want to bring the attention, the DFW portion of this, their lands, uh, 2020 initiative where they're buying and acquiring lands. All those blue dots are places they'd like to acquire. And if they do, you can kind of see how it actually starts to lock down even more of the corridor. That red box is the parcels I've been showing you. And so you get the ideas as we slowly move forward, it's going to be more land lockdown. There's Port Blakely land. There's other spots that are being looked at and you know, hopefully within two or three years, we will have enough to say that corridor is, is viable for long-term. So these pictures are from the vet's farm. This is a hundred yards from I five. You can throw a stone and hit cars. This is an elk there, one of the many that hang out there that would love to cross and, and migrate across if they could, but they can't. And it's the black bear that's always there. And he likes to beat up our cameras and he owes me a lot of money for that. But that, that, that being said, it's just a wonderful, it's a wonderful way to collect data, you know, these camera traps, but this is along I five. I never would have thought when I started that I'd be in a place that's fairly residential. That's right along I five and, and find every species you find out in the wilderness. This is one of the properties we picked up, uh, to gift to the Shalas Tribe. You can see it's fairly undevelopable. Was the deal, but it'd been on the market for a long time and we just got private donors. We stepped in, we bought it. Tribe's going to keep it for conservation. And this is the kind of thing that if there's these parcels sitting there within the corridor like this, we got to act on them, try to do what we can to either not build or to keep them. And it's important to remember that because they were mapped as corridors, they likely do look like this, right? They were not mapped as corridors because they're, have a lot of houses or development in it. They're mapped because they have a lot of vegetation. So, you know, it's the same reason the airport was looking in corridors to try to put an airport, uh, because that's where they found there to be no development, but it's not a coincidence. And it's something we've got to think about, um, as we move forward. Kind of want to talk about a little bit of what we do as far as coordination and partners. We have tons of partners. Here's a, a group of kids at the Tudor Lake, uh, School District. We did great monitoring along I five. These kids were great with WashDOT, with DNR and with, um, UC Berkeley Transportation, uh, College. It's just, it was a phenomenal, a phenomenal way to kind of get data, include the community and have fun. And these kids were great. And this is something I use all the time. This is one of the, the final drawings that one of the kids did. And I was like, I can't even do that. And I'm hoping more than one animal uses it, but other than that, it was great. And it's just a great sort of outreach tool and something I would try to share. The timeline for I five, at least from our perspective, looks something like this. I mean, this is a sort of haphazard version of it, but we would like to see by 2030, something happening, right? Because if we wait any longer, as you all know, development pressures are hard. I five is a place you're supposed to develop and we've got to get in there and just kind of curtail this stuff. Before it makes it not viable, um, for any sort of corridor crossing. Also, I wanted to mention that a couple of things. One, just because it's not mapped, doesn't mean it doesn't need to be connected. Before we developed things, everything was connected. Um, if an area is white, it doesn't matter. You can still connect it, right? If, if it's an urban area, it can still get connectivity. There is plenty of opportunity wherever something exists to connect it. And so I don't want people getting hung up on maps thinking of, if there's no corridor there, I can't do anything. It's absolutely not true. I mean, the maps tell you what's there now. You can create a corridor and if we map it again, voila, now it'll show up. So there's opportunity to turn those white spaces into corridors and make things better. And don't get too hung up on what was, but what could be. And I think that's something that gets lost when people look at these maps. I love the paper plane, uh, linking backyards to increase. This is another, you know, there's no map that's going to run through that neighborhood saying there's a corridor. But if they took all their fences down and planted some native vegetation, you bet your bottom dollar that animals are going to use it. So just keeping in mind that connectivity is something that is everywhere. It's all the time. There's lots of opportunities to do it. Small scale, big scale, statewide, backyard wide, and not to get too hung up on where the maps are because all models are wrong. Some are useful. And I think that's true with connectivity models as well. And I know I rambled. Oh, it's my favorite, the origami. Uh, I know I rambled a little bit. I talked kind of fast, but that's where I am. And if there are questions, I'm happy to take them. If there are not questions, I'm happy to not take them.
Thank you so much, Brian. Um, I think we do have some questions and we'll go to Commissioner Bartlett.
Thank you. And thank you, Brian. That was a great presentation. I wanted to get a little bit, I have two questions. Um, one of them was just, you mentioned that you're using indicator species. I was wondering which indicator species you're using and why? Cause, uh, like what, what do they, what do they represent? Um, what do they indicate? And then, uh, regarding, um, you, the, the different types of conservation you talked about, you talked a little bit about, uh, about like protecting relatively untouched habitat. You talked a little bit about this, like, um, habitat that needs a lot of restoration or even habitat that's currently considered basically development, people's backyards, people like these urban corridors. I was a little curious about your differentiation there, um, when it comes to, uh, building, uh, overpass, bu- building, uh, 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 corridors over, over, uh, roads. I know that there's, there's a need for officially protected land in that context, uh, for the Department of Transportation to be, to be willing to invest in it. So I guess from our perspective as, as, uh, as, uh, uh, planning commissioners, I guess, what should we be looking at for these different indicator species, for these different types of habitat in terms of, zoning and protection, um, for like the, where should we be focusing on, uh? Sorry, this is not a question. I'm just really interested. Uh, where should we be focusing on, uh, uh, supplemental work, like, uh, restoring people's backyards and stuff like that for particular species? And where should we, we be focusing on? Just protecting pure habitat? Like what are the contexts there?
Okay. That's a great question. So the first one is the focal species that were chosen, at least for the Southwest Washington modeling were a beaver, mountain beaver, cougar, fisher, uh, uh, western gray squirrel. And we'd use natural landscape too. And then there's one more, but they're all chosen because of the habitats they represent. So beaver for semi aquatic and riparian, uh, habitats. Mountain beaver for early cereal stage, cougar for generalist. Western gray squirrel for oak prairie. I mean, so they all have a very specific habitat. So it's habitat connectivity, not species connectivity. So any species that uses riparian corridors will likely use the beaver model or any species that's a generalist will likely use the cougar. So that's why we chose those species. So we could equally represent each habitat and then kind of use that one to, to cover the other species that might use it. Of course, there's, there's nuance in there that, that's not covered. Um, that, that takes a little more fine tuning. Um, as far as like where to focus or, or the nuance or the differences in the actual land acquisition or conservation. It's sort of complicated, but where the corridor, the one that runs over I five, anything within that. We should be hyper focused on how to, how to maintain it, keep things the way they are, if they're good, um, include connectivity, voluntary, whatever we can do. Outside of it is where to, to me, it's, it's, anything goes. I mean, maybe we don't necessarily care about connectivity as much, and that's where we allow some development. But within those corridors, the, the big ones that are modeled, that's where we've got to be super focused. If, if there's a, for say, uh, a large corridor that crosses I five, like the northern linkage, but there are two small ones that feed into it. That's where we'd want to look to make sure those stay viable into the future. And if there's a bunch of development and there's nothing we can do to change it, that's where you really focus on, okay. Can we do backyard stuff? Can we, can we make this park a little different? Can we do some, you know, whatever to make it a little bit better and just keep it good? But again, I'll say if it's mapped as a corridor, it's highly unlikely really developed at this time. So you know, when you're dealing with the urban stuff and, and lots of residential, it's probably not in a corridor or a core. And so that stuff is just improving general connectivity, which is super important because there can be corridors. We have no idea exist right now. Species that would use them that we don't know that would use them because they can't. And so there's a lot of ifs there, but to me, the ones that line up with where there'd be a bridge, those parcels closer to I five and moving away are super key. So that's how you prioritize them. The ones closest to the road and then moving away from them into the Cascades and Olympics are to me the most highest priority. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that does get my question. Thank you very much. I'll leave it for later.
Uh, just a quick one. Uh, Ashley, or excuse me, Andrew. Can we get copies of both these presentations sent to us?
They're online already, but we can email them as well.
Please do. Thank you.
I got an email.
Mr. Hanson?
Uh, thank, thank you, Brian, for your presentation. I really enjoyed it. I, uh, I'm pretty familiar with that Veterans Ecological Trades Collective Farm. Spent a bit of time there a few years ago. And, uh, yeah, I got the solar ray built there.
Yeah.
But, uh, I, I know, and I'm looking again at the map here that there's a BPA transmission corridor um, that runs, I, I'm not sure if it's on the property or just north of the property, but it continues across the freeway. Is, is, does that also make this for a good location? Because I imagine that that corridor provides a, a habitat corridor that extends for miles in both directions.
This is a good question. There's been a great debate and, and discussion about that. Um, two issues come up. One, some species won't enter those because of the noise, although it's subtle. Some of them are actually turned away from that. And then the other piece is, boy, getting those, getting that entity to agree to like, hey, we want to put a bridge over where your stuff is, like they're pretty cool with that. But other than that, it does provide connectivity for some species and it being there is part of the reason there's a corridor. So if we fence off I five within a mile, anything going down there was going to end up at the, the crossing structure as well. So it's, it's important to remember that anywhere this structure goes, there'll be a mile of fencing on either side of it funnel, well, not funneling, but at least trying to bring animals to use it versus, um, not.
Is there any conversation about, um, co-locating or, or finding additional uses for, um, or additional reasons for, um, an overpass? Um, cause I, like, I'm looking, I know that there's a rail line on the west side of the freeway there, but it, it doesn't connect to the east side until you get down by the Port Shalas, I think. But it might be useful to have a connection across the freeway there. Is there any thought to like designing something that would serve multiple purposes and ask, because that might help to access multiple funding streams?
No, it's a good point. And it's something I think WashDOT's digging into right now. They really, you know, there's obviously a lot of budget issues with the state, but it's something they want to try to see if it's viable to do something like that. And then there's also the opportunity, maybe the county, there's case road. There's other things that have to get crossed that maybe there's something we can do with those as well. That's sort of a dual project that has more benefits than just one. Um, unfortunately, you know, crossing, crossing the freeway for no reason is difficult. Crossing a reason for wildlife is still difficult, but if we can find something that's, um, useful, I think that's the goal for WashDOT to do, uh, but that's still, I think, down the road for them to decide.
Thank you. Um, any additional questions?
Great presentation. Thank you so much.
No problem.
All right. Is that field guide still in circulation?
Yeah, if I can find it. It's my favorite.
That's a good one. Thanks again, Brian. Um, we really appreciate it. I don't think we have any more questions for you here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, really exciting work. Thanks a lot. Right. Well, we're running a little behind time, but those were both really, really interesting. We have no continued business, and our other business is first a staff update.
Take that off. So yesterday at the Board of County Commissioners meeting, the board adopted several items that Planning Commission has looked at or worked on. They adopted the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan amendments, which included the LTA update and Grand Mount West zoning and UGA amendments. They adopted the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty capital improvement program and set a public hearing for the countywide planning policies for January fourteenth at three thirty PM. They also authorized a boundary review board contract amendment with Thurston Regional Planning Council to help with annexations. We have hired someone to fill the physician, Associate Planner position recently vacated by Dana Bowers. That person will start on January second and has a lot of experience with critical areas ordinance and shoreline master programs, things like that in the private sector. So we're really excited about that.
Ding ding ding. It's on your work plan in the upcoming.
Um, we will be going back out for stream pillar restoration planner. So that is Brian Medjeman's former position. So hopefully, we'll get a great pool of candidates in the second go-round. And we'll also be advertising for a community planning manager sometime in the new year. That's all I have. Ashley, do you have any other updates?
No. It was a big, it was a big day at the board yesterday, and Commissioners Halverson, Casino, were able to be there. Thank you for that. It was nice to have some friendly faces as we got a few things across the finish line. But the Planning Commission as a whole played such a an important role in the end-of-year projects. I know it was covered, but agriculture zoning and the Grand Mount, Grand Mount projects. So thank you all for that. And next year will be an even bigger package with the comprehensive plan. Happy to answer any questions about that as well.
But not the capital improvement plan, anyway.
Oh, can't wait. Well, you'll, you're, you are gonna see it, but it should look completely different.
All right. Okay, based on that. Before I left to go on my vacation and miss the last session, I'd asked for a hard copy of the Have we got that yet?
We do not have that document. And we won't have that document until, is it February? That is the new date.
Yeah, for the comp plan.
Yes, we we did cover it at the last meeting. We not surprisingly, we were, timelines are shifting. We have a little breathing room. We are still ahead of all the cities. And so we were trying to get all this done so we could make room for the Planning Commission to start considering the city's joint plan policy updates. Well, they're not gonna be ready in January, February. So we're gonna take that time. We got the the draft is with our education and outreach team, and they're gonna be working really hard over the next month to try to plain talk it. It is gonna be a challenge. We'll see what it looks like when it comes out. Not necessarily plain talking the policies, but the narrative, trying to make that document more accessible to folks. Which hopefully you all will having these binders. So, yes, it is coming. The drafts of all of the chapters that have been reviewed by the Planning Commission are available online. The effort at at this time is to just try to go through that plain talking so that the public hearing draft is the draft that will be moving forward.
Yeah, my point was to get a hard copy of the plan that's gonna go forward to the public prior to the public hearing.
Yeah, and we don't have that.
Yeah, so that we can all have a chance to look at it and scrub it, because that's the only way I'm gonna do it. I'm not gonna do it online. I don't know how many pages it is now, but it's probably as big as the SMP was.
Do we know how much it weighs? Sixteen, seventeen pounds?
But we will be sure, yes. It should plain talking, in some cases I've heard, it might make things longer, you know, breaking down a run-on sentence into three more manageable sentences. In some cases, it might make it shorter. So we'll just have to see. There were, I think, there was at least one appendix you all eliminated. And if we, yeah, so we'll see. We'll get it down to fifteen pounds from sixteen.
We'll put it on that. All right. Any additional staff update questions? Or updates? Okay, moving on to item number seven, it is our Thurston twenty forty-five update. General update. Is there anything we haven't talked about yet?
Do you wanna give any kind of update on the environmental?
Yeah, we are working with our consultants on the supplemental environmental impact statement. So we got a draft. We took some time and staff to read it, and we've sent some comments back to them. So that's gonna just be some back and forth here over the next several weeks, but it is on its way.
Yeah, and we'll be engaging our tribal partners on that before we make it available publicly, before it can share with the Planning Commission. That should be happening here in the next month.
Any questions from us? All right. Moving on to our calendar. So we've got three upcoming meetings. I know I've got a question about the February fifth meeting, and then setting a public hearing for the the full draft. Do we think that February date, we will have a draft by then?
That's the the goal. Before you get there, if I could, the January eighth date, we were thinking of a different plan of not doing a special meeting, but just essentially axing the first meeting of the year, which would be January first, and just doing the normal January fifteenth. So the plan is to bring back the Tamar UGA Development Code. Staff are working on having that ready for you all and doing Planning Commission elections. I know the Board of County Commissioners has not yet reappointed folks that have their terms ending at the end of this year, and they can hopefully do so at their first meeting in January. So there's just a couple headwinds to having it on that date, and we were hoping the Planning Commission would be amenable to putting that date.
I remember remembering the conversation correctly, we won't have quorum on the fifteenth. Too many people will be out for the Governor's Ball, which is why we wanted to reschedule. We, I don't think we'll have quorum if we do the fifteenth.
We hopefully will have it. We can shoot to that. We may not have the Tamar UGA Development Code ready by that time.
We could just cancel and just move to the third.
Yeah.
The third week.
January twenty-second.
That would be the fourth week.
Are you, are you thinking of canceling all January meetings or just?
The first one, yeah. So I think we were looking at one in January, twenty-second is the best date for that. That could be something we can work with.
So the fifteenth is what you were talking about, Commissioner Bobbey.
We we proposed a meeting on the eighth last meeting because of how hard attendance was. We already knew that the plan was to strike the first, obviously, because it was a holiday. And the fifteenth conflicted with more than half of the the board, so we proposed the eighth. I don't know what twenty-second or twenty-ninth availability is. It is eight, five, Wednesday, one.
I do. I do recommend actually the twenty-second over the eighth, just because of the realities of the commission getting themselves started and trying to their, their, their appointees sorted out and their their situation sorted out. I think it's better for all of us to give ourselves more time than less.
Do people have conflicts on the twenty-second?
Does anybody not like the twenty-second? All right, hearing no opposition to the twenty-second. Let's do the twenty-second.
Changing it on your calendar now, because I'm gonna forget about it instantly.
All noticed appropriately for public and anyone who wants to attend.
And so what's scheduled for January eighth is actually gonna be on the twenty-second.
Same agenda, different date. Thank you, Mr. DeFobus, for taking us to First Things First. And then, second things, the February fifth meeting, it does sound like we will have a draft. How do we feel about being able to set a public meeting? We can set it out basically as far as we are public hearing.
Absolutely.
As far as.
It's it's an opportunity for you to consider setting that public hearing. If the Planning Commission is not ready to set that hearing, you do not necessarily need to.
Fifth, if we're just getting it, if we really want to give ourselves times to drill down and get our
Figure out how far away we are. To set, plan to set the hearing on the, move that, set the hearing to the nineteenth, would that throw our schedule off?
I don't think so. I think we were still, we were thinking in March for the public hearing. So I think that's still, well.
My only thought is I would like for us to have some space to get the draft, see the draft, see how we feel about the draft.
Ask her fifty million questions.
Yeah.
I think the goal is to try to have it available for the board to start reviewing following their summer recess, I would say at this point. Which still gives the Planning Commission quite a bit of time, as long as, just like we did last year, where you're we're layering in other stuff, like if we do start getting stuff from cities, we'll start bringing those joint policy documents before you. But I feel like you could, you can handle both. And there's gonna be parallel. Yeah, parallel review efforts probably going on.
All right. So does that feel right to folks? Give ourselves a little space to see how we feel before we translate that public hearing? So do we have any big conflicts? Or do we have a lot of conflicts on either the fifth or the nineteenth of February? Do those look like they will be viable quorum meeting, meetings?
Maybe gone on the fifth.
All right, if we hear that those might be a problem from folks, we might think about rescheduling. But as of now, it looks like, given the information we have, we can move forward with those. All right. Sounds good. Moving on to agenda item number nine, Good of the Order. Does anybody have any Good of the Order?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
I am running a fundraiser for my son's Cub Scout troop. So if anyone, he wants to buy beautiful salmon fillets from from Alaska, I've got five hundred pounds of them in my freezer.
My god.
Email address up on.
Yeah, I know. I didn't want to sell popcorn or wrapping paper or anything people don't want, so I worked out a deal with a buddy of mine that fishes in Alaska and
All right. If we have no other Good of the Order, that brings us to item number ten, and having no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.